Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our study session. Thank you. Before I start the presentations and for the council, I have an acknowledgement that I like to read. The City of Lakewood adopted the Indigenous People and Land Acknowledgement Statement to recognise and show our respect to the Indigenous people, who are the original guardians of the land where the City of Lakewood is located. The Nisqually Indian Tribe has an enduring relationship with the territory that includes the City of Lakewood, and we recognise them as the first inhabitants of this land, not only today on Indigenous Peoples' Day, but every day. The statement that I will read now recognises Lakewood's commitment to respect and its commitment to preserve the traditions and culture of the Nisqually people and to honour the unique heritage of the Indigenous people of the land. Indigenous people and land acknowledgement. And it reads, "Every community owes its existence to the vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hope, dream, and energy to make the history which led to this moment. We would like to recognise that we are on the land of the Nisqually people and acknowledge the history of disposition that allowed for the growth of our community. We offer respect to the Nisqually people and their elders, past, present, and emerging. We recognise our responsibility to the value of all people and are committed to equitably serving all people in our community." Just to add to that, I would just say, thanks for allowing the city to use your land to grow our city. So, thank you. So, moving on. To get ready for our presentations, and I will call upon our long-range and strategic planning manager, Tiffany Spears.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor and members of the council. I will begin with an apology to you because Courtney Burnell is no longer with us, and so I am here in her stead. I will do my best to get us through this discussion this evening, but if there's anything we can't answer for you live, we will certainly follow up. And of course, Community and Economic Development Director Dave Buhr is here with me as well. So, just getting started here with a presentation by Deputy Clerk here. If not, this is in hard copy in our materials tonight. There we go. All right, so as the Deputy Mayor just mentioned, this is the discussion regarding tree preservation code. At the last meeting where this was discussed with council, there were a number of key issues, which I believe were brought to basically a conclusion, but there were several outstanding, which is where we're going to be spending some time with you this evening. First of all, the question of utility and rights-of-way exemptions. Secondly, replacement trees and the ratio at which those would be required. And then a third item is just the effective date of the ordinance once the city council is ready to proceed with the ordinance, taking action on it. I'll just refer everyone to the hard copy, which begins, let's see, on page 80 of your packet. So, regarding the utility and rights-of-way exemptions, there is some language suggested in the packet this evening at 18A70-310 and 330 subsection B, subsection 1, subsection A, which basically is saying that for a utility to be able to maintain and remove trees within the right-of-way, they would be doing so following issuing a permit or submitting a permit application to the city, which serves as notice to the city as to what they're going to be doing. Related to trimming of trees, that is actually handled in a couple of other sections of the code, but related to maintenance and removal or topping, again, that's going to be referred to as of it is as of tonight at 18A70-330, which refers to Oregon White Oak Preservation. And then subsections A1A is where there's discussion of that notice required by a permit by utilities. So, any questions on that one?
Mr. Buhr, say it.
I think that's, in general, a good solution to what we're looking to do. I think, you know, utility rights-of-way are a place where the interest in tree preservation and the interest in sustainability of the community, particularly during adverse weather events and things come into play. And just looking at the events that took place in Florida and other parts of the country during 2022, you know, the loss of power and the loss of utilities has been always sort of at the forefront as to one of the immediate measures of severity and impact on a community. My one question about the proposed language, because I do like the fact that we'll get notified and that there'll be a permit process and that in the rare case of where maybe there's some questions to ask, that's a good thing. But should we, asking utilities to go through that and doing a permitting process, that perhaps we should consider whether the fee for utilities to get a permit is different than the fee for developers and the other land use areas of where we're going to do. We're going to adopt an ordinance that's going to require a lot of people to get permits to justify the removal of trees and the establishment of replacement trees. This is a little bit different from many of those. And while I think a permit, a notification and using a permit process to do that, that this may be an area that we want to retain the no-fee permit. And note in the, in the ordinance that they get a permit, but it's a no-fee permit. And we have other places and types of permits of where we've designated certain groups that get get things, but there are no fees. For instance, nonprofit organizations get no-fee business licenses at the City of Lakewood. And that, this may be something that I think that maybe, maybe we should consider when we look at utilities coming and looking to remove trees, which in almost all cases would be a case of where the tree poses some potential risk to the dependability of utilities. And while we kind of want to know about it, that, I don't know if these, while it doesn't require replacement trees, as I understood it, I'm not sure that, I guess I don't know what we're going to adopt as a tree permit cost. I may be one of those people that's thinking of a higher number than other people. But I'm not quite sure that I would want to do that. So, I guess is there, is changing to this, having the notification be via permit, going to be significantly costly to the city in this regard? Or is it sort of a pro forma notification process?
Mr. Buhr?
Generally speaking, as it pertains to right-of-way permits, I see it more of a pro forma process to make sure that they're not substantially removing or cutting down Gary Oaks. As far as the fee goes, that's a city council decision, not as a part of this ordinance, because it would still be required to get a permit. But if you're going to exempt utilities from a fee, that would be in your master fee schedule, which will be coming before the city council through your budget process. That master fee schedule will also talk about what the fee will be for other permits that you do not exempt. But that's within the council's discretion. I don't know how many utility right-of-way permits that we're going to get into with utility companies, because we have not required fee permits before, so that would be something that we would monitor. I'd probably also talk with the Public Works Director, get a feel for what this might look like when I bring, when we bring back the fee schedule for your review. That's something that if the council wants to do, they can do it through that process.
Okay, thank you. And I think we can address this, and we actually have a fee schedule in front of us, and we're going to be looking to do that. And I'm anticipating that the effective date that we put on the ordinance is going to be beyond the date when we're going to be looking at the fee schedule.
Any other comments? Mr. Bokey?
Yeah, I got some questions on utilities do maintenance-of-way. They should be doing it fairly, on a fairly routine basis. So, I mean, in my mind, you know, TPU or PSE, let's just talk the electrical providers or Lakeview, should be doing this almost constant, right? They should be out there looking at their lines, they should be doing this. So, how many permits do they need? If I'm Lakeview Power and Light and I say, "We're going to work on trimming trees in our service area, and there are 40 miles of lines. These will encompass this area of the city, and it'll take place over a period of four months." How many permits do I need?
First of all, TP, now, Lakeview Light and Power may not be the best example, because most of their stuff's already underground anyway. Okay, the next one would be Tacoma Power. Okay, Tacoma Power has a significant service area in the City of Lakewood. The best way to handle this would be for them to get like a master fee or permit for the entire area, and we would just process it one time. Though I would call them, I won't say the worst offender, but the one that doesn't always trim trees as often as perhaps we would like would be PSE. They usually have significant problems specifically along Nyans and Gravely Drive and along 104th, on the west sides of the City of Lakewood, because we have older neighbourhoods with substantially older trees. I think we need to have just a better relationship with the utility providers and see if we can't just get a master fee for the entire year. And then that would be the easiest way to address this. As far as the city is concerned, our focus is going to be, are you removing any Gary Oak trees? Beyond that, pretty much do what you want.
Yeah, I would think a master permit would be the way to go, because I don't want, even by requiring the permit, because you see here Renton, Pierce County, well, almost everybody exempts, right? Exempt with pruning standards and university plays, federal way exempt. So, we suddenly become, my concern about this is we suddenly become the odd person out, right? Or are we, or are they still getting permits?
When you say "they," you referring to the other municipalities?
Right, it says Pierce County, it says exempt, or Renton exempt. University Place exempt with pruning standards. Are they getting permits?
I do not know the answer to that question, but I would like to go back to PSE for just a moment. I've been here a while, so I can tell you from time to time, PSE will do major projects. When they've had to go into a neighbourhood and remove substantial trees, they back away, whether it's Gary Oak or otherwise. And they have completely redesigned their system to go in areas where they have not, where there were not a substantial number of trees. So, I'll give them credit for trying to look at the bigger picture. So, when they were doing a major extension to the Lakeview neighbourhood, they actually bypassed large areas with substantial trees to protect them. So, you know, we do work with them, and it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, Mr. Bokey. But I don't, I think if we went with the master fee schedule, I think if we just have communication, and I do believe Public Works Engineering meets with all the utility companies once a month. So, once the council adopts this ordinance, if that's what they choose to do along with the master fee schedule, we can have that conversation and say, "What is it that you're proposing to do so that we know in advance?"
Okay, so, so we could just do one, one permit in that, in that case, whether or not we charge for it is. But, okay, I just, I just don't want to get into the business of running a utility. We're telling them how to run their business, right? They don't tell us how to police, for instance, like gee whiz, you know, someone stole or did damage to our, our boxes or something. Why don't, let me tell you how you guys should run your business. They don't do that. I presume, maybe they do. I don't want to be in the business of telling them, well, because as Mr., as Councilmember Branshaw said, "When the power's out, I just want it to go back on." So, and, and if we give them any excuse to say, "Well, we haven't been doing the maintenance-of-way because of your restrictions." Well, that falls on us then. Shame on us, right? Do you see my conundrum?
Absolutely, I, we concur. The last thing that I want the city to do is adopt tree regulations, and we end up with a great big storm, and then we have all kinds of issues with permitting. If you recall back in 98, 99, we had a huge, huge windstorm, and we had all kinds of issues. Power was out for three weeks. The Baptist Church, which is over on 112th Street, that entire lot was full of tree debris. So, if we have those kinds of emergencies, I don't want the code to get in the way of those kinds of situations or with utility companies either.
If I could add on to that response. The other thing to do is look at whether the term permit and the process of submitting a permit is the way to do this. If the purpose is for notification and for verification that there's not, I don't know how to phrase this, but there isn't a unnecessary, I'll use that term tonight, trimming or removal of a Gary Oak, for instance. The city can have that discussion without having to go through a permit process. Maybe there's another way we can do that, we can do a little bit of exploration there.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn.
I like the idea of a notification process possibly that would take the permit fee out of, out of play. I am, I agree with everything that's been said tonight. I'm not interested in, in causing problems of leaving trees up and fully limbed where there might be an issue with a storm. Clearly, we don't want that. But I do want to telegraph that pruning is important, and particularly in how, in how it looks. Because we have been through some situations here recently where utilities have come in and have seemingly hacked at things. And, and we've heard a lot of, we've heard a lot of public comment about, about how that has looked. And so, I was intrigued by some of our neighbouring jurisdictions who have exempted with pruning standards. And I would, I would very much like to not, to stand in utilities' way, but I want to telegraph that pruning is important to us and in the manner in which. And so, there are standards, and maybe they're already abiding by those standards, but I would like to just be on record that that's what we'd like. That's fine.
Thank you. So, the second outstanding issue from your last discussion was regarding the ratio for significant tree replacement ratio. And so, if you were to go to, it's a few slides in now to the presentation that was included in your packet. Section 18A70-320, related to significant tree preservation. There's a sentence at the bottom of that slide that says, these, or this section would be added to subsections B and C. "The resulting replacement ratio is no less than one to one of all replacement trees to the diameter inches of all the significant trees removed." So, I believe this is answering the question and how it was discussed with the council the last time you had this. But what you would see then in an ordinance that would come before you at some point is that subsections B and C of that section in 18A70-320 would include that sentence there at the bottom of the slide. So, if there's any questions on that, happy to try to answer those.
Anyone have questions?
It was clear as mud. All right. The last item then that I would bring before you this evening is the discussion about the effective date of the ordinance, when the council's ready to do that. And as of now, if the council's ready, the, you could be taking action as early as next week, on October 17th. However, given the amount of preparation of the general public's awareness of this significant change in the way the city is regulating what's on their own property, be it their own residential property or commercial, as well as the need to prepare the handouts and forms, et cetera, that will be used for the program, as well as the fact that, as was just mentioned by Mr. Buhr, the fee schedule hasn't been set yet, and that won't be coming out until the council's ready with budget action. So, the department is recommending a February 15th, 2023 effective date. And so, that would give us about four months from now. A little bit of wiggle room, given the holidays and how many people will be looking at the city's website about trees during Christmas, or Thanksgiving, or whatever. So, that is the, the recommended date would be February 15th.
I would also add that we're working with Brenne Granley, so that the next Lakewood Connections, we have a full, full piece on this, and she's working with a publication person to get the next date for the next newsletter out. So, we'd like to make sure that we incorporate that, and those dates have not been set yet.
Very good. Can we get a consensus with that? Okay, that's good. Thank you. Mr. Bokey?
So, a lot of this is predicated. So, so we've now put in some standards that will preserve trees on lots. Now, let's think bigger, like industrial, commercial lots. And there's this, there's a reasonable use exemption, but there's also interior area of lot, at least 10% of the trees and various things like that. But there's always a way to buy your way out of it, is my understanding, right? If I say, "Well, I'm desperate to have this, like I'm going to make so much money putting this building in, I want to do it." And in some cases, it could be residential too, because there are some pretty significant stands of Oaks in residential areas. We've discussed in theory about an urban forestry program or ability to buy in, right? So, today, it's, I write a check, or after, even after this is passed, I'm writing a check. But could you, what's our timeframe now on, and I guess I'm asking everybody this, our timeframe, I'm making sure that we have a program that says, yeah, they write the check, Bokey Corp writes the check, here's the money. Where and when do these trees go in the ground? Because we still haven't identified any properties to purchase to put trees in the ground. And they would significantly, and my thinking is that they would have to be in the area that was, the study showed by Burke, where there aren't enough trees or tree canopy, and that would be the side of the city. So, where are we in that process as we sit tonight?
I'll start it off, if that's okay. A perfect example, we have a person proposing a mixed-use development, probably 115 units. I'm expecting a pre-application in the next 30 days. Right in the middle of that lot are two large Gary Oak trees. In that particular situation, there is no way he can build his project consistent with our downtown Siberia plan without removing the trees. So, in that particular case, he would be looking at a two-to-one replacement. And the way that would work would be a 36-inch tree times two is 72 inches. So, that's what he's having to buy. So, we take that and we divide it by three inches, which is the size of tree that we use, and then we multiply that by 400. And if my calculation is right, it's about $10,000 for that one tree, and that goes into the tree fund. Okay, it's really up to the city council as to how it wishes to use that tree fund. And so, in the future, you're going to see staff via the city manager coming back to the council, talking about how to spend that money. Now, we're also looking at a urban forestry management plan. And we have been working with the Evans School of Management, and RFP has been proposed to actually start the process and looking at a five-year plan to develop an urban forestry plan for the City of Lakewood. We will be working on the details of the RFP in December with the goal of bringing you back to the city council for your initial review in May or June. And that is the timeframe when you're going to start looking at, okay, how much money are we going to have? How much is this program going to cost? And then you're going to be looking at some of the other issues that we've talked about of, you know, trying to place trees in areas where we, we have a lesser amount of tree coverage. And I think you'll be coming back to the city councils, we get closer into those issues and asking for your direction. But ultimately, you know, we're going to take your policies, as well as climate change and some of these other things that we've been working on, the sub-area plans, and come back with you guys with some recommendations as to how to move forward with those funds. So, that's how I see it.
Mr. Branshaw?
Yeah, you know, I have no problem with the proposed effective date of the ordinance overall and generally. But I would really like to have the effective date of the ordinance have a caveat with respect to the, I was, the, the oak trees on lots between 10,000 and 17,000 square feet. You know, you know, I don't want to create a window of where there is a permitless ability on multiple residential lots, particularly in R3 zones, that here's a four-month window to go in and get rid of any, all the trees that you want to. You know, that's one of the fact that that's been happening more frequently and people like, is one of the things that brought this to public attention. So, I'd really like the effective date for the protection of the Gary Oak trees on residential lots to be immediate, you know, rather than defer it off for four months, because I can see a lot of trees coming down in four months. And and that's a more pessimistic view than I usually have, but, you know, I, I think that it will be, you know, other sorts of developments, permitting processes and that take a long time, and four months is, you know, is, is probably not going to result in a whole lot of rush to do things, because people are trying to develop commercial properties and things. Their lead time is a lot more long than, than what we're doing, and we're probably not going to influence that significantly to, to do that. So, but, but I am concerned about those residential areas of individual lots of where people are just decide to take down trees, because maybe Just decide to take down trees because maybe or maybe not in the future, but since it's going to be restricted, let's go ahead and do it. Do it now. So i- is there possible to do some language that? Maybe makes everything effective and maybe the 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 there aren't fees, but you still have to go through the reasonable use process. On residential lots would be something that I would be interested in knowing or looking at how we could do. Because I think that's the one risk of of a four-month.
We could bring, we could bring back a possible amendment from the city council to take a look at when you're looking at adoption. But I have also pointed out, you know, if Ms. Ms. Walker can correct me if I'm wrong. But when you adopt an ordinance, it's effective thirty days thereafter, so it's not immediate.
The only way it would be immediate is if it were adopted as an emergency ordinance, and I don't think you have a basis for that on this one.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. So, thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So you, what? I'm, you were thinking that you want a caveat just for the Gary Oaks is what you're thinking. And your proposal is that you would bring something forward for us to look at.
I would bring something forward to the council in the form of a of an amendment to the code.
Got it.
Based upon Mr. Bransdeter's comment for council to consider.
Okay.
And it would be very specific to Gary Oaks and residential zoning districts. Otherwise, I think we're going to be pretty well protected through shorelines, critical areas.
I was wondering if their protections are already there. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Bransdeter.
Mr. Mayor, I I I did one thing, and and I do appreciate the fact that there are now some additional wherethes. That are in the in the redlined version of the ordinance that were. In response to the request to making sure that we have made the case so that when someone is looking at. Reasonable use exceptions of why the ordinance is in here. That. But I guess I would ask the the opinion of the city attorney as to whether or not. The the wherethes are strong enough to support. Reasonable use challenges.
Councilmember Bransdeter and members of the council. I'm just responding to the question about the wherethes in the opposed ordinance or what wherethes would mean generally. Mr. Buhr, is there a particular page on which those appear?
Well, I mean, I'm.
And and part of the reason that I'm responding without actually needing to look at the wherethes is that they are one piece of a legislative history. That you create when you're passing an ordinance. They substantively are not different than the minutes, than the record of your discussions or than any of the rest of it. And so to the degree that you feel that the wherethes reflect your intent, that is the purpose of a wheretz clause. Would I be able to rely on it in court to the degree that the wherethes look different than perhaps? Some of the other information that was discussed. They would all be on an equal footing at that point. They don't carry the weight of law. They just speak to the council's intent. It's your formal adoption of what you believe your intent is.
Good, thank you. And and I would just would note that in the suburban times within the past couple of days. There was a notice about the Pierce County finally had the results of their greenhouse gas emissions regional study data. And I thought it was interesting that they noted that. Between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, that actually greenhouse gas emissions went up. In the county and that. Tree removal. Was. First on the list of significant reasons for that. So I think we're. We're doing something that's. Addressing. A real problem in a direction we want to make great change.
Any further questions? Comments? Do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you. So what we will do is have before you next Monday night a draft ordinance with some of this incorporated with some other suggestions or recommendations. And it's obviously up to the council to decide if you're ready to take action next week or if you'd like longer. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our commission. Let's see. Arts Commission, have a call on chair. Yeah. Come on down.
I'm not going to say much, but I wanted to say good evening, councilmembers and deputy mayor. We have nine of our twelve arts commission members here today, and they're going to rotate through. Succinctly recapping our significant accomplishments on our twenty twenty-two work plan, starting with Sylvie.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed council members. This is way better than being at the podium. Thank you for inviting Lakewood Arts Commission to share events and happenings we've been working on for the community's enrichment. I'm Sylvia Estrella, member of the Arts Commission, and I'm here to speak on the MLK event. The event was online this year for the second year in a row. It's been my honor to to have produced both videos. In twenty twenty-two, we shortened the viewing time from thirty-five minutes to twenty minutes. This year's theme was The World Lives in Lakewood. This was the title of the mural created in twenty twenty-one by Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. And Clover Park School District and the City of Lakewood. This mural was an inspiration born from the twenty twenty-one MLK meetings. I interviewed elders. Lyle Qasim, civil rights activist and community leader. Joethel Smith. Original founder of Lakewood's MLK Celebration. Bev Einenson, civil rights supporter. And Hanford McLeod, tribal member, council member for Nisqually Tribe. And we, I interviewed them to hear their first-hand experience with civil rights movement. And juxtaposed with interviews with youth and their perceptions. We had also had a wonderful musical ensemble of Michael Powers, Green Candy, and Obi Corliss, which was very well received. Over sixteen thousand people viewed the video on YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram. It was published January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And it garnered positive comments as far as the East Coast. We're excited to continue this video project. And are there any questions? All right. I'll turn it over to Emily.
Thank you. My name is Emily Feline, and I'm the chair of the Arts Commission. So while I am new to this role, the commission is proud of the longevity of our members and our ability to recruit new ones. Earl Borgart remains our vice chair and has been in this role for six years. One member, Linda McDervin, just resigned after six years of service on the commission. We also brought on two new members, Robin Sutton and Darwin Peters, so we currently only have one vacancy. And now I will turn it over to Lua to talk about the special events at the Colonial Plaza.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable deputy mayor and council members. I'm Lua Pritchard. I'm one of your commissioners for the Commission on Arts. In this year, we implemented an all-new series called Saturday Street Festivals on Motor Avenue. There were four events from four to eight thirty. Dancing in the street, Carnival of Cultures, Jazz Night and Car Show, and Fiesta de la Familia. The events were in May, June, August, and September. Dancing in the Street event was one of our biggest proving once again that our community loves to dance. For the Carnival, cultures, entertainers were booked through APCC. Performers represented Japan, Hawaii, New Zealand, Tahiti, Caribbean, India. Korea, West Africa, Thailand, Mexico, Okinawa, and Samoa. Those are very, that's a lot of countries. The goal was to make people from all cultures in Lakewood feel welcome and seen. Jazz Night and Car Show was a success. Trophies were given to the car show winners in the categories of fan favorite, police department favorite. Fire department favorite and mayor's choice. It was a fun way to involve other city departments. Thank you, council members, all of you, council member Moss, deputy mayor Moss, for being a judge. You also played a big role. Thank you very much. And here's Daryl.
Thank you, Lua. Good evening, council members and distinguished guests. I'm here to speak about the Fiesta de la Familia. It was one of the four special events at Colonial Plaza that Lua mentioned. Festival de la Familia was chosen as a theme because forty percent of the student population in the Clover Park School District is Latino. Our commission member Sylvie designed the flyer for Fiesta de la Familia, and the Clover Park School District had it translated into Spanish. This event also had a Latino art exhibition titled Art from the Latino Culture by El Solon Dearte. The event had live music and performances from Mexican folkloric dance. To Tacoma Arts Live Student Group, Cuban music, Panamanian performers, salsa and other Latino entertainers. The food included street tacos, Mexican corn, tamales. Empanadas, Mexican bakery items, and carne asada steak with chimichurri sauce. I'm getting hungry now. Just as a few examples, there was also a sand artist. In closing, I'd just like to say that this year's festival warmed my soul and satisfied my appreciation of the arts, world music, food, and fashion. And now I'd like to turn it over to Lonnie, talk about rotating art at City Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and distinguished council members and our staff here. I'm Lonnie Neal. I've been fortunate to live in the city of Lakewood since nineteen ninety-six, and I didn't realize that was the beginning of us becoming a city. I've raised my children here in the Clover Park School District. And I love living here. I just intentionally made the city of Lakewood my home. And for all of you who had met me in person, you know I'm very social. So I'm going to stick with my script to keep it to a point. So to discuss the rotating arts, we ended up taking a a break from getting the artwork in the city of, you know, in the city hall because of COVID. And we are now getting things back in the swing of things. We have had two artists display their art in City Hall in twenty twenty-two. Currently, we have artist Mauricio Robellino, and he designed four of our signal box wraps, which are amazing. I'm deviating. The artists. We had several artists from the Fiesta de la Familia Motor Avenue event. And we're going to be rotating those through City Hall now. So we have invested in several hooks for the hanging system to start our displays of the rotating art. So from there, I'm going to hand this over to Emily again.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to talk now about the Colonial Plaza Public Art. So the piece is titled Gateway Arks by artist John Fleming. And the current plans for the public art piece. First, we will light three maple trees that stand behind the artwork that'll be on the CVS side. And then two streetlight poles that will be put in to illuminate the sidewalk as well. So a few points about our progress to date. We have the manufacturing of the triangular openings with Lakewood's lake design. We also had the plate shipped to Portland and rolled into the art shapes. We also have a hundred and twelve aluminum strips etched with the stories that we gathered from the public. We went to various spaces. We went to gather these stories where the Lakewood Rotary Club, Boys and Girls Club, Pierce College. And the Asia Pacific Cultural Center New Year Celebration, just to name a few. The structural design with the concrete base anchors is complete, and the building permit has been approved. So work that is currently underway, the studs being welded to the inside of the arcs where the aluminum strips will attach. The right-of-way application, and we have contacted two concrete subcontractors for the concrete work, and we're still awaiting price quotes for those. We also have plans underway for the unveiling of the art, so more details to come about when that will be. And are there any questions about the art that myself or Sally might be able to answer if I cannot?
One of the things that I will say is that in honor of our mayor, Jason Hoyler, is there a waterfall?
Oh, unfortunately, I don't believe a waterfall fit into the design.
That would have been his question. So are there any questions from my colleagues?
All right, thank you. I'll actually turn now turn it over to our vice chair, Earl Borgart, to talk about the signal boxes.
Good evening, council. It's great to see everybody in person again, and I am Earl Borgart, vice chair of the Arts Commission. And I wanted to talk a little about the signal boxes that we've installed around our community. We've installed ten signal boxes in twenty twenty-two, and we did four in twenty twenty-one for a total of fourteen. This involves selecting the artists that have art that speak to the specific communities in which we install the art. It involves selecting the signal boxes and a strategy by which we do this, including determining traffic count numbers. And the impact along the community itself to kind of brighten up certain areas of our communities in Lakewood. The cost for ten locations was about twenty-three thousand, and our next steps are to install ten more wraps. Focusing on the International District in about twenty twenty-three. Thank you. And I will turn it over to Lonnie for talk about real life.
Real life, ninety-six. So our inaugural film competition last year went amazing. So we had thirty-three teams that had the opportunity to write, shoot, and edit a five-minute film over the course of four days. Just ninety-six hours, real life ninety-six. So the competition started in February, and the criteria that the teams got. At the beginning of their ninety-six hours, where there were three things they had to include. They had to include a lit candle, they had to include some kind of dancing, and they had to include the quote. Sometimes you have to be happy for what you don't get. So that makes. It just makes it exciting, but they don't know, they can't plan their film completely ahead of time until they get the criteria from us. So they had ninety-six hours to complete their film. We had the gala screening on March nineteenth, and that was at the McGavick Center using a city day. And all. Excuse me, all the films were shown on four big screens in the in the McGavick Center. It's pretty epic how that works. We had fifteen distinguished community and council members who were judges, so we appreciate that as a huge thank you to contribute to that. That was a lot of time. We awarded cash prizes in ten different categories based on age and, you know, best actor, best actress, you know. Best film production, those kinds of things. We had, we estimate we had about four hundred and sixty attendees.
We had, we estimate we had about four hundred and sixty attendees at the gala, and everybody received a custom medallion donated by Crown Awards, which is a local business here. It was kind of a cool inaugural thing for them to receive. And the feedback we got at the end is several professional filmmakers and school film educators participated in Real Life ninety-six. It's interesting that we had people coming from all over the place. We had teams from Oregon. It just spread big, and it was complimented as one of the best organized and executed film competitions that they have ever participated in. So that was a good inaugural kickoff. Okay, and I'm gonna turn it over to Paige for summer nights at the Pavilion.
Hi, I'm Paige Hansen, and I've lived in the city of Lakewood since two thousand and one, and many of you are personal friends of mine that I know through Lakewood Playhouse where I'm on the board or otherwise. And I'm happy to be here in the service of the Arts Commission. I've been catching up on Game of Thrones, so I may have said I'm presenting at court tonight to my family when preparing for this. It's like, no, I'm presenting to the city council. Though, thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss and council members and staff for hearing from us. My sons, my two sons have gone to Clover Park Public Schools. I have one freshman and one senior. And I started my civic involvement on the MLK Committee years ago, and I'm still just a huge fan of that and excited for what's gonna come this year, as is my teenager. We're so thankful to the lodging tax grant that we were able to implement six summer concerts at the new pavilion at Fort Silicon Park, and I sing in one of the bands, and I have to say, it was the best backstage, and it was air-conditioned, which was really nice because it was a very hot day, very hot. We heard from the Aphrodisiacs, the Pan Wizards Steel Orchestra, that was free of charge for us, Herding Cats, Olson Brothers Candy Shop, the one I sing with, Good Company Swing, and Paperback Writer. The biggest crowd was for Paperback Writer. That's a Beatles tribute band that was passing through on tour and brought people as far as Seattle. In all, the attendance was between two hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty people. We loved the synergy between the farmer's market and the concerts. If you were there, it's great having them on the same day, overlapping so you could grab some dinner and have a picnic while enjoying the music. So all in all, a wonderful thing. I'm so proud of our city for having that beautiful pavilion. Thank you.
And I appear back to be Susan. We had such a good time last year. We moved the retreat by a month and had it on September twenty-nine from three to six. We had hands-on painting instruction by artists and residents at Lake Wald. We bonded, laughed, and of course, brainstormed our twenty-twenty-three work plan. And here's Robin.
Good evening, council members and friends. I was gonna say family. You feel like family to me. I've been a resident of Lakewood Oak Brook, actually, for thirty-five years, raised my kids here, and been a past performer and supporter of the arts. So I'm thrilled to be here and be part of the Arts Commission. What I'm talking about tonight is the Christmas parade and the lighting and the floats and the judging of the floats. This event is taking place December tenth from four-thirty until five-thirty PM, and we're going to be in person in the parade, starting from the Colonial Plaza to City Hall and for the formal tree lighting right after that. The commission members will judge the floats and have trophies in three categories. Most spirited, best overall performance, and most original. That's what it is. Santa will stand by the tree for photo ops, and we hope the city council members will hand out goodie bags and remember that Christmas is only forty-five days away. At any rate, it's getting closer, right? And so I will now turn it back over to our vice chair, Earl.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you again, council. In twenty twenty, way back then, the Arts Commission presented the city council a detailed six-year public art plan specific to Lakewood. So far, you have approved, and we have implemented the signal box wraps and one mural. Thank you very much. We look forward to continuing these programs, these two programs, in twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three is the year we recommend implementing rotating sculptures on plinths as a low-cost way to introduce more sculptures to Lakewood. The recommendation as a first step for twenty twenty-three is to install one plinth. At that time, when we budgeted it, the plinth was about twenty-five hundred dollars. Things may have changed in the last two hundred years, I mean, two years. In twenty twenty-four, we recommended implementing two rotating sculptures on each plinth. And then, do you, I would like to ask at this time, do you anticipate funding this recommendation for a plinth in twenty twenty-three and in sculptures, other additional sculptures around the city in twenty twenty-four? And if so, where would you like to see them located and when, what locations? And lastly, is there any kind of art that you envision? In what theme, if any?
Addie? I guess I'll speak. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Arts Commission, for coming and presenting. I am very honored to be the council member liaison, so I know a lot of these things that you guys are working on and get the updates, and I try to bring them back for the council and for the residents here. So your last question of things that we would like to see. One thing that I had talked about with the Arts Commission at the retreat is taking a look at one of the other roundabouts and looking at that space and putting some public art there. Another thing that I would like to be looked into, which I don't know the feasibility, but there's a new management company here at Lakewood Town Center. So talking with them about possible murals, because I really think that murals really can bring a lot to the city and especially that area there. So those would be my things that I would think about. I'm just, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in the time that I have been here and even previously on the Arts Commission. So much amazing stuff. You have so much great momentum. I'm an advocate and a supporter, and I believe that the rest of the city is too. We all, I know that Mayor Whelan loves his art too, so we're all speaking for him in his absence. So those are my thoughts on that. I would love to know more about the plinths. I know that that's just starting, so for me, I think just knowing more and learning more about where you want them to go, what the potential artists might be, some more details on that, I think would be really helpful, and especially for the rest of the council too. So thank you.
I can share with you that I appreciate the wraps. It's really eye-opening. It's refreshing.
It's been fun.
Good job. Now, Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, interpreting your question about particularly locations for the ongoing program of some rotating sculpture and perhaps growing the number of those. I don't really have a particular location in mind other than that I would like them to be within walking distance of each other so that they are not single entities to do that, but we've got a number of linear parks in existence or proposed, or we have some areas that would do that. So give that a consideration. I would agree with the Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Bell that I really appreciate your work. I think both on the performing side and on the visual side, it's been very apparent. I would note that in, you know, about six years ago, when the council adopted a vision for the community, one of the elements of the vision of that at its thirtieth anniversary, which is now four years away, that Lakewood would be known for its vibrant arts and cultural community and known would be, not just internally, but externally as well, to be able to go and do that. And that remains the goal for twenty thirty. And I think you've made great strides in causing that to happen in multiple fields of being able to go and do that and the compliments that, you know, that we receive from participants in our events, from the arts community, that I think speak really well for both the Arts Commission and the city staff that support your efforts in that many of the comments are comparative to other locations and other events, and they're comparative in a laudatory way. So I'd like to go and do that. There was one public art activity that took place in the past year that you didn't mention. And I guess that I was just sort of wondering if you were satisfied with it, and that was that we we moved around the Lotus Blossom. Okay, are you happy with how it ended up?
I think it's gorgeous, actually. Yeah.
You know, because there was a lot of discussion about where was its final resting place going to be, and assuming it would be someplace in public view.
I think it rests very well now.
But that, you know, that's a good example of the kind of thing that actually a roundabout might serve as a good thing over there, and it is, despite the fact that many people don't really know what it's called, that there are many people that use it as a landmark when they're giving directions to people.
I just wanted to address that we've had some discussions about the Lotus Blossom, and its final resting home really is a beautiful place because you, it is a very three-dimensional sculpture, and it does change as your viewpoint of it changes. So thank you for bringing that up, because it's fantastic.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. I think you've done a wonderful job as a group of making sure, and there was reference to it earlier, of a really good balance of events dealing with visual and performing arts. And I just think it's a very, very nice balance, and Paige, I second what you say about the, the, what would be the right word, the synergy that's been created for the summer nights at the pavilion with the with the farmer's market, and my sister and brother-in-law started coming up from Lacey because they love the farmer's market and they could stay for the thing. And so it really, it really does work out very well, and it really is a great venue. I found the Real Life ninety-six thing, I couldn't stay because I had made other plans, but I went through the first segment. I found it, you know, inspired, I guess, because I had never sat through anything like that. So kudos to whoever thought it up, and kudos to all of you for really making it happen because I just thought it was really, really a neat thing. You know, I just was like, wow. And was, and so a couple of things I'd like to, we are in budget season. Our budget will be done here, so we need to really do understand, although we've already received parks, and I think you're in the parks budget, but maybe we need to re-discuss to make sure that specifically at that granular level that we have the funding in place to do what needs to get done going forward. The public art, I think, or the box wraps, and let me tell you, my day job, they're trying to do box wraps, much larger organization, and you guys crank them out, and seems like at a little quicker rate, and I think overall the art's better. So I really do, and I guess I'm just prejudiced on that, but I, I'm just really, I think some of the artists has been fantastic. So, so, so good for you, but let's just make sure we've got that. And then I will put, we've talked about public art, this other thing's going in, and I know you went through a lot of discussion, shall we say, and different artists and various things like that, but I've always had in the back of my mind this goal that I think I bring up every year that we should be trying to turn around public art at some certain segment. I've settled on my, in my head, at three years, every three years. So we really, you almost need to begin discussions in the first part of next year of what is the next public art piece like? It doesn't have to be as big as the one you're doing, or, you know, because the bigger it is, the harder I think it is to establish consensus. Or it could be several small pieces in the right spot. So as Councilmember Brandstetter said, we're hoping eventually for linear parks and various things like that. That could take a while before those kind of things come to fruition, but those would be great places for art. I just don't know that it's gonna happen in the next two or three years is my concern on that. So we're gonna have to be continuing to look for places. So I'm done.
Just very briefly, because I think we all want this public art to go in relatively quickly, like you mentioned, the thirtieth anniversary, the one really quick way to do that that's in the public art plan, and I won't belabor this because we'll go into more detail later. We'll revisit that. But it's these, this rotating art on the plinth, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars roughly to put in one plinth. Let's say we do it in a roundabout. Let's say it's on Veterans and Gravel Lake, so it's within walking distance of the Lotus Blossom. We put the plinth in one year. If we could only afford the twenty-five hundred dollars, we can get the plinth in in twenty twenty-three. And then every six months, we could rotate in art for a year, for two artists to rotate in a sculpture. That's about fourteen thousand dollars. And so it's a really inexpensive way to bring in art, and then they remove it. The next artist comes in. The benefit is that they get free advertising. People can buy it, see it, and we just pay them a stipend.
Any other questions, comments? Well, we appreciate all that you do. We love it. Did you have a question?
Well, I had one more additional question is, in regarding the street festivals at the Colonial Plaza, may I have the council's thoughts and recommendations or feedback about the events that took place this year there?
I can tell you, I enjoyed every one of them. The Car Show was my favorite. But very much so. Anyone else? Comments? Ms. Farmer?
I remember we started off discussion a year or so ago about a night market, and that, I think that is what morphed into the street festivals, and I love the later time. And so that, for me, it's with the lights that come on, and in particular, the the atmosphere of that plaza is kind of, I'll use the word electric, but it's really exciting when everybody comes together and hangs out there. And so I love the time that goes into a little bit later in the evening. So I would love to see that because it's something a little different from the farmer's market. And I know that I can always find Councilmember Bokey and his family there at the, he's got his food, they've got their chairs, and they're watching, and they're watching, listening to the taking in the concert. And so the street festivals are something a little bit different. So, yeah. It's been a great year. That postcard, teeny-tiny little postcard with all those events packed on it lived on my refrigerator for months, and we were constantly figuring out, well, where can we go next? Because there's always something going on here in Lakewood, and so I hope that we can keep that up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. I thought all of them were great. I especially liked the Fiesta de la Familia. That was very personal to me. I thought that was great. Something I would like to see is some sort of pet feature. And I know we had talked about that, but an event that focuses around whether it's, I don't know, licensing your pet or something pet, a way to tie it back into the city. I know that animals and pets are huge, and people love their fur people. So I think that that could be a nice addition somewhere.
Thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, yeah. I certainly found those events to be successful in that they lent themselves
they lent themselves to, um, having multiple and actually quite different themes, which was, was good and resulted in different mixes of the attendees. Okay, I, I, I didn't, it went back to the four of them, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't just always seeing the usual suspects, you know? Uh, to be able to go and do that. And so, and I also thought that the frequency was about right for our community. Um, you know, May, June, skipping July in deference to Summerfest and then doing August and September. You know, I, I think that was, uh, that, that was enough. And I think that it was, it had about the right number of, of, of vendors, not, not, not as vendor focused as the farmer's market, but, 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 but a few. And, um, um, some, um, you know, good informational folks that were there and, uh, a, uh, a, 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 a mix of food and it varied a little bit from, from, from one festival to the other to, to be able to go and do that. And that was good. So I thought that it, uh, it is, um, it provides a good template to look at beams for next year.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, we really appreciate you, council. You did a great job. We had a lot of fun. Our summer, they well agree with us. I know you had, that was part of your, uh, job as well. But thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
And next we were going to call upon again his Spears on the long range planning with James Hughes and, uh, from the South, oh, Together South Sound again. So I guess your parties are going to join you on Zoom?
Uh, yes, we do have some remote presenters this evening, Madam Deputy Mayor. So very quickly, Tiffany Spear, one more time, you've had a series of, uh, presentations since last December, actually, where you've had sub recipients of the ARPA dollars that the city was awarded to come and give you updates. Tonight you have two presenters or two teams of presenters, I should say, career team who is working on workforce development for the city and then rebuilding Together South Sound. Included in your packet tonight, um, I'm not going to open it up, but just it's there for your information is information about the scopes of work and budgets for both of the contracts that the city and, uh, entered into with these two groups. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to the representatives for career team first. So that would be James Hughes and/or Dion Lister, if they are available.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Dion Lister. James is, is not here. Uh, he's out of town, so I'm going to be standing in. Um, so thank you for having us here. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming I can just go off of the, uh, the questions that were emailed to me?
Yes, if you don't have anything else to present, please do.
Okay. All right. So I'm the outreach coordinator and I've been working on the project that we have titled Lakewood Thrive. Um, and so let me see, the first question that I was presented with in my email was, what is the scope of your project? And has it changed since, uh, since Lakewood approved funding? So basically the scope of, of the project is, um, to, to connect with Lakewood residents and also get those same residents connected to training providers that are in the city of Lakewood, i.e. Pierce College, Clover Park. As, and we've also connected with, uh, Commercial Driver School, uh, the, the Commercial Trucking School. And really what it is, is what we're doing is we're just trying to get residents connected to trainings at those training providers. Um, that once the residents are done with their training, they're able to come out of that training and go into entry level and, um, career opportunities that pay at least twenty-five dollars or up. And, uh, the, the, the whole goal is to really just kind of, to, to close the, uh, the earning gap between the highest and lowest earners. Um, as Lakewood was identified as one of those areas who has a really big gap in between the highest and lowest earners. So that's kind of the, the, in a nutshell, kind of the scope of the work and the reason why we're doing the work. Um, and how has it changed since Lakewood has approved funding? Well, for us, um, you know, the funding that Lakewood provided, as well as, uh, in addition to other funding that we have, it's kind of allowed us to, to leverage and, uh, put a more concerted effort, um, into our Lakewood Thrive events. Um, it helps us out with staffing. We were able to staff more individuals at these events to, to connect with the Lakewood residents. Um, you know, things like pop-up events, we're able to do those. Um, where we just kind of just go somewhere and we pop up and we start providing resources and connecting with residents, um, just kind of meeting them where they are. Uh, also the marketing of the events and things like that we give away while we're there at the events, just to kind of engage and get those conversations started. So those are just a few ways of, of how things have kind of changed since we were able to, to get the Lakewood approved training. I mean, not training, but funding.
Any questions from this council? Okay, continue.
All right. Um, so the, the second question that I was asked was, um, who does your project benefit? And how many Lakewood people have you helped so far? So it pretty much benefits the residents of Lakewood, the training providers, um, that are located in Lakewood. And then it also benefits employers in Pierce County as well as the, you know, some of the, the nearby, uh, workforce development areas, uh, Thurston County, King County, um, just because what it does is it, it, um, it provides, um, job seekers with marketable skills. And obviously they're not all going to find employment in the city of Lakewood or Pierce County, but a bulk of them probably will as well as some of the, the, the close by, um, workforce development areas. So it kind of, it kind of benefits the, the entire comm- economy of, of, you know, not only Pierce County, but some of the, the other workforce development areas as well. The second piece of that, how many people have we helped so far? Um, so far in these, uh, events that we've, we've put together, we've been able to like actually connect with ninety-two residents. And of those ninety-two residents, we've been able to connect twenty-six of them to training providers in Lakewood. So breaking that down a bit more, um, twenty-one of those twenty-six we have connected to Clover Park. And the other five we've connected to Commercial Driver School. Uh, we, we think those numbers will grow, um, now that we've actually had Pierce College be added to the schedule of events. We've kind of mapped out a, a schedule of events over the next few months. Um, Pierce College was not able to participate once we, at the beginning, when we first started, just due to their scheduling, um, and then a lot of the professors being, uh, you know, out. And so now that they're back and they've kind of got settled into the first quarter, they're able to jump in and be a part of the scheduling. And we got a couple of events scheduled with them already. So we think that, uh, the number should grow. Um, and that is due to just, um, you know, Pierce College being able to provide us with a couple of different options as far as training that people may be interested in. Um, we are also awaiting for the Lakewood DSS, the DSHS office to approve us to be able to use their space to have events there in that space. And the idea behind that is just being able to access, um, the residents that actually visit that office for DSHS services, which are, a lot of them are job seekers. So being able to access that office allows us to, to, um, come into contact with, with, uh, more job seekers and more people who may be interested in, in some of this training and employment and placement services that we provide.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Bransiter?
Yes, Dion, uh, thank you for your presentation and, uh, having you in here to do that. When the council approved the funding for a career team, um, one of the things that we were looking for is to specifically target and make a difference in, uh, our, uh, our four targeted areas of Springbrook, Tillicum Woodbrook, Monta Vista and Lakeview. Of the ninety folks that you've connected with and, and the ones that you have, uh, significant outcomes with the twenty-six, uh, to what extent have they been with, from within those targeted areas?
I'm sorry, I missed the, the first part of that.
Well, when, 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 when one of the things that when we, uh, uh, approved the funding, we were, were looking for targeted outcomes in uh, four of our, uh, neighborhoods, Springbrook, Tillicum Woodbrook, Monta Vista and Lakeview. And, uh, and, and, and for the outcomes that you've achieved in the first year, uh, have you been successful in working within those four neighborhoods or is any one of those neighborhoods proved to be particularly challenging?
Um, we've done events in Springbrook, um, over at, at their, the new office that they have there. Um, and we've also done an event out at the Tillicum Community Center. Um, the Tillicum Community Center had a lot more attendance. And so I would say that one was more of a success. Um, I think, I, I, I don't know the total number of people who attended that event. Uh, because it wasn't, we were, we were added on as a part of an event that they were already have, have going on out there. So we weren't keeping the total number of those attendees. But I know that we were able to connect with over twenty individuals there at that, uh, event in, uh, Tillicum. The, uh, the event in, uh, Springbrook, um, we advertised it, we promoted it. It was actually one of our very first ones. Um, and so the attendance was, was, we only had one person show up. Although we did have eight people who registered for the, to come to the event, only one person showed up. And we kind of attributed that to just kind of building up that trust and, and just, you know, allowing residents to kind of get familiar with us. Um, and so again, we're, we're going to continue to do the events there, um, you know, in these different areas and continue with that consistency. And I think that is a a part of one of the other questions that we were asked. Um, see.
Well,
Which is the fourth question. So I'll, I'll get to that one, you know, and kind of cover that, that after you guys, uh, ask your question, you know, kind of be your follow-ups on this question.
Okay, I am, uh, again, um, when we, when we really asked for those four neighborhoods to be targeted, uh, we did so because we knew that those neighborhoods presented challenges. And we wanted to target the funds that we had to try to, um, promote some, some change for the people that, who look to live there. And, uh, again, Tillicum and to some extent Springbrook, you know, like Tillicum has a, a natural venue that you can use to, to attract people. Um, and, um, Monta Vista, on the other hand, is on the other extreme. There's no obvious venue there to be able to go and do that. Uh, so I guess I would say as you go into the second year, um, in addition to, 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 to just looking for numbers, I would, would, would want to say we continue to focus on those four neighborhoods to try to bring, get outcomes there. Uh, you know, other neighborhoods are more low hanging fruit. You can get, I think, people, people to come to do that. But, um, as you, as you go into the second year, think about, uh, how, 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 how those neighborhoods perhaps need unique engagement strategies. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, would you mind letting me know which, which venue it is that you're, that you were speaking of? When you were talking about the Tillicum area, would it, would that be the Tillicum Community Center or is that, would it be a different venue?
Yeah, and, 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 and the, 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 the Community Service Center in, in, in Tillicum, uh, with, with, with the location of the library and the, and the, and the, and the primary healthcare clinic, uh, and, uh, and some space, okay, uh, is, uh, uh, and its proximity to the school and thus to parents, um, is a, um, uh, you know, uh, Benelac Centanding Center for folks that wanted to, to engage with people in Tillicum is, 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 is a, is a place to do so. You know, uh, again, you know, in Lakeview, um, you know, the Boys and Girls Club and the elementary school there are the only significant obvious venue. And Springbrook has been, they have a number of places that they've tried, but they're, you know, their most successful venue has been the park, but rather than, than, than a physical place because of dynamics there. And, 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 and nothing has really emerged as a, as a, as a, as a, as a central location in the, in the Monta Vista neighborhood, which is, you know, one that makes it very challenging to help.
Yeah, well, thank you for that feedback. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Should I continue with the, the next couple of questions?
I was going to ask you, Mr. Lester, how much longer you think you'll be?
Uh, I just have two more questions that, that I was asked.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the third one was how far along are you in your project? And we just recently continued, uh, um, we just recently, uh, finished our first quarter of it, well, of this year. So, um, it, it was in, uh, September, the end of September. And so, um, we just ended the first quarter of it, um, and we have completed thirteen of our you know, our scheduled thirty-five events. So we have thirty-five events scheduled as of right now that we've kind of mapped out. We've completed thirteen of them so far. We plan to add more events to that schedule as well. And if, if no one has any questions on that, I can roll right into the last one.
Go ahead.
Okay. The last one is, are there any lessons learned to date that will inform the remainder of the project implementation? And, uh, I kind of spoke on this a little earlier. So historically, we, we, we've learned that just building trust in the community, it, it takes time, like building it or, or rebuilding it right after it was lost. Um, it just kind of takes time. And, um, we, we, we experienced that, you know, do, in some of our first events that we've put on. But we've also noticed a, a uptick in attendance since we've, uh, had some sort of consistency in our week, that we're doing weekly events, um, and having them, you know, at a, at a, a world recognized venue. Um, and we've had a couple at, at one of the same venues. So the, there's been an uptick in attendance. So that's, that's something that we've learned um, and that we're going to lean upon. Um, and also I wanted to say thank you for that information on the venues in Tillicum and, and Lakeview and the other places as well, so that we can kind of build some consistency and go into those venues as well and, and also the frequency of, that we're doing these events. Um, we've also received a little feedback on, um, the social media marketing that we're using to get it out there. And how it's, it's, it's very effective, um, with the residents because when they come in, we're asking them, you know, where did you hear about this event? Where'd you see it at? Right? So we're getting some feedback that is, you know, our social media marketing is working. And so we're going to lean on that as well going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lister. The next person that is going to be presenting to you is from Rebuilding Together South Sound. Rachel Lear is the Operations Manager. So Rachel, if you're, uh, uh, present, go ahead.
I am here. It just took a moment to get connected. Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Rachel Lair and I have a little slideshow for you. So give me just a moment to get that on the screen. And let's see here. Um, is that big enough for you? I'm not able to see what you're seeing. I'm not able to see what you're seeing.
This is very clear.
Okay. Let's see, how's that?
Very good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, council members, for taking the time to hear from us tonight and also. For your support of our continued work in the city of Lakewood. I am going to discuss our rebuilding a healthy neighborhood program, starting with our August repair projects. I get to introduce you to some of the homeowners that your approval of ARPA funds for our programs helped to fix some of their homes. So first, I want to introduce you to Michael, he's a senior living with disabilities. This whole project that we're talking about is mostly focused in Monta Vista. And there's a little bit of work in other neighborhoods throughout. Michael's primary concern was his, his front porch. The steps weren't safe, there weren't handrails for him to use, and he had actually fallen several times in his home. And getting in and out of his home. So we built these new steps, we call these modified steps or walker steps, because the step height is a little bit lower than a typical stair. And then the step itself is deeper, so there's more room to stand on. So that's our before and after, we had a couple of great volunteers help us with that. He also had two windows that were like completely broken, like could stick your arm from inside to outside. And we were able to get those replaced as well. Next, we have Walter. He, one of his big issues at his home was that his front door wasn't locking anymore. Wouldn't, wasn't sealing out the outside air, so when it was hot in the summer, it was hot in his house. And when it's cold in the winter, it's cold inside. He also had a aluminum ramp that had been installed in the front of his home. And that wasn't quite secure, there were a couple of posts that were rotting, there were a couple of things that needed to be re-supported. So we were able to help him with those things. We also worked with Mary and Tristan. Mary is a grandmother living with her grandson with disabilities. And they needed a couple of different things at their home, primarily some grab bars in the bathroom. For Mary so that she could use the restroom safely and get in and out of the tub and all of that. And then they'd had some previous water damage in their bathroom floor. And it was starting to become a tripping hazard because of the flooring itself would move when they were in the bathroom getting ready for the day. So we were able to get that wrapped up. And then in Woodbrook, as one of our initial outreaches to another neighborhood. We worked with Lacey and Chester, they are parents of five. And their front door, you can see that top left picture. You could kind of see the, the outside all the way around. So we were able to get a new door in there for them, secure the floor, make that nice and weather tight so that their heat stayed in and. In the winter and the heat stayed out in the summer. They also had a bathroom that, we see this a lot, where over time, the flooring in the bathroom, especially if there's a lot of kids in the house. Water will get splashed out, the, the flooring gets damaged and then people will pull it out. So we got new flooring in there so that they don't have to worry about slivers, it's nice and safe and sealed up and good to go. The second phase of our project was a community in reach fair. This again was in Monta Vista at Village Green Mobile Home Park where the first three projects that I showed you were located. And we had some ideas about what this in reach fair would look like initially. But as we got to know DeeDee, who's pictured here. Our, our approach changed a little bit. Initially, we were thinking that we would have projects and the resource fair on the same day, and it was going to be really great. And everybody was going to be really excited and she was like, hang on, how about we like spread this out a little bit? So that's why we did the projects in August. We did the, the in reach fair in September and we're planning some more projects for the end of this month. Again, in Village Green. We had, oh, I lost my count. We had about eight different agencies who were able to participate in-house. And then we had four agencies who sent materials because they weren't able to attend. We had about thirty folks attend the fair and they were really grateful. To have something celebrating their community. To be able to connect with different resource providers face to face. To get to know several, the Lakewood police officers stopped by. They got to know different neighbors and it was, it was a really great day, there was a lot of joy in the room, there's a lot of laughter, it was, it was a good, it's a really good time. Following that resource fair for rebuilding together, we received eleven applications from, from Village Green. And that's the basis of our projects for later this month. And then we also, as a way to continue to have presence in the community. Had office hours throughout the month of September where folks could drop in. Office hours at Village Green, folks could drop in and fill in an application, ask questions, drop off income documents. Learn about other resources, we try to provide as many resources to folks as we're able. We got a lot of positive feedback from the other agencies. And since then, we've even been able to make some connections between the city of Lakewood. In their Ward Lake Park project and Village Green because they are right next door to each other. Some things that are next, because there's, there's always new, new things and things that we've learned. As I've said, we're going to be focusing our work again in Village Green for October twenty second. We anticipate six houses, it could be as many as eight, and still kind of playing around with some numbers and seeing how many folks we can serve. And we'll have some, we'll have several longtime volunteer teams there. Additionally, we're going to have one project in Lakeview that we had initially had slated for August. But because of some scheduling issues on the side of the homeowner, we've had to delay a little bit, but we're still going to get it done. And then we are going to continue to collaborate with. Within array of community advocates in Lakewood to focus our twenty twenty three projects. We, over the summer, we hired a housing community health worker who has been a key part of the success that we've experienced. On these projects so far. And her focus will in part be this continued outreach to community partners to get the word out to more residents. Things that we've learned, I completely resonate with some of the things that Dion shared. That. Building community trust does take time. And that was one of the things that we learned in working with DeeDee is that we're going to choose to have a partner in the project. And we need to let them set the tone and set the lead for the project as much as we're able. We really did see a lot of people who are excited to learn about community resources. We saw a community that knew what they needed and just didn't quite know where to ask for help. So it's really great to be able to be like, hey, we brought it to you, it's right here. And I'm looking forward to what we have planned in October and then what we have planned next in twenty twenty three. And I have a couple of other responses to those other questions. I'm going to pop out of this screen share. And I can take any questions that you have now while I pull up my other notes.
Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, help me out now, how many, how many residences given the budget? And I can't off the top of my head remember the budget.
Yeah.
How many residences? Are you going to be able to take care of, you think?
Yeah, we have fifty two thousand dollars per year, I believe. I know that on the, the, I know how much money I have to spend on the project site, so I believe it's fifty two thousand dollars a year. Tiffany, if I'm wrong on that, please feel free to correct me. And we are looking at serving ten to twelve households. And through the repair projects, we're looking at about twenty five residents. And then we had an additional thirty folks through the resource fair.
Okay, so I do want to make a comment, and this is really for us, but thank you for bringing up specifically a mobile home park. That we may not have done work as a city in, in the past. So if you run out of funds, you should probably let our folks know about. Things that we may be able to do in there because we do have programs.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would love to connect on that, and I know that. DeeDee in particular is a really great community advocate and would love to be a part of conversations about ways to make her community better.
I'm asking our staff if that works.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I would recommend that you speak with Jeff Gumm, he's got several pots of money that could be helpful for some of what they're proposing.
Yeah, low income housing assistance and that, that kind of thing, and I guess it works in mobile home parks also. I just don't know that we haven't. I mean, maybe they've cracked the.
We would like. And not use CBPG funds for mobile home parks, but there's some other funds that would work really well. That state fund that, that we have for about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Very well for something like this.
Yeah, I would, I would love to be a partner in how to get more folk served, so I will make a note of that and reach out later.
Thank you.
Any other question?
If there's nothing else, Rachel, from you, or do you have anything else?
I had just a handful of client statistics, if you're interested, otherwise I know that that will be in a later report. Because I saw in the meeting minutes that are, are kind of like partway through the year, report was listed in there.
If you don't mind, then Rachel, I'll just ask that you send that along to me and I'll include it in the next quarterly report for council.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. So Madam Deputy Mayor and members, there was one more sheet that was included in your packet at page one oh eight, which summarized the fact that the city staff is now going out and doing monitoring of how all of the recipients. Are handling the funds, tracking the funds, following rules under ARPA. We haven't come across any glaring problems yet. We will be following up as well for all of those contracts that are for multiple years. To make sure that all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed before another year's worth of commitment is made by the city to those organizations. But so far, the, the findings have been good. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for that, because that's, that's important. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we have our Assistant City Manager for Development Services, Mr. Bueller.
Hear me tonight, how's that sound? We're talking this evening about adopting an energy and climate change work plan. I'd like to go over some timeline information that hopefully will refresh the council where we're at. Back in July sixth, twenty twenty one, the council adopted ordinance seven, five, six, which created the Comprehensive Plan Climate and Energy Change Chapter. And in that document, there were lots and lots of action items, I believe around eighty nine. And the council expressed some concern about that number. And I'll talk a little bit more about that because we've learned a few things since then. So we returned to the planning commission to figure it out, how to get from eighty nine to a more. Workable number. So the commission met in October, November, December, and on January five, twenty twenty, to. Provide a recommendation to the council on possible work plan items. Then we went back to the council on February fourteenth. And the council requested that the work plan be further refined and each of the tasks be grouped and prioritized with targeted metrics. And then associate costs be identified. In my words, what the council wanted was more cowbell. Which is fine. So we went back to the planning commission again, March sixteenth, March thirtieth, May eighteenth, July thirteenth and July twentieth. And I would say we did all those dates because they were struggling with this assignment. As well as we were doing comprehensive plan updates and tree preservation, which took an inordinate amount of, of the commission's time. So we sort of broke it off in parts and brought it back for them to review. So the commission adopts a three-year work plan on July twentieth, twenty twenty two. But in this process, we noticed there were disturbances in the force. And I say that because this whole thing is changing rapidly. And I want to talk to you very briefly about some of the things that we've found. First of all, the Washington Department of Commerce has begun the process to develop guidelines for Comprehensive Plan Energy and Climate Change Chapters. But those guidelines aren't done yet. And I don't anticipate them to be available until January, but they need to move forward if we're going to incorporate those into our periodic update. So again, that's an unknown. In the meantime, there was been a loosely formed ad hoc committee of Pierce County and Pierce County cities to start talking about climate change on a regional basis, which is really rather exciting. And of the community groups, I would say that there are three a little further ahead than everybody else. Tacoma, which has been doing it for several years, Pierce County, and Lakewood was just vastly moving up. But one of the things that Tacoma and Pierce County said to everybody, which is worth pointing out to this council, is. Everybody makes the same mistake and adopts too many action plans and it actually causes more confusion than it's worth. And so they recommended that all the cities focus, focus, focus and narrow as much as possible your implementation measures. So what the commission was asking for made sense, the council did too, bring it down and focus. We were hearing the same thing from our peers. In the meantime, Pierce County Regional Council, then after Lakewood adopted revised PCRC policies, which also address climate change. And then the Washington Association of Building Officials has adopted new requirements for electric vehicle standards with more changes to follow in coming years. And the Washington UCTC is in the process of addressing and adopting EV regulations. Which has some significant effects upon utility companies, which we are staying out because we don't have utility. But at the same time, trying to address things through Pierce Transit and Sound Transit. And there's a big push to put EV stations within and adjacent to the I five border. And then lastly, Lakewood receives an award for its Comprehensive Plan Energy and Climate Change, which came out of the blue, it was not expected. And I believe the state's coming back next week on October seventeenth to say something. So things we've learned, climate change is a rapidly evolving topic and expect lots of change, even though we're coming before you with a proposal. And then I would like then talk about. The actual document itself, which is, which has the, I believe it's what? Fourteen policies which are found in your, in your document this evening. I will say to you that when the report was submitted to the city manager, he had some concerns that the climate change policies would, in my words, break the bank. I told him not to worry that much of this has already been pre-programmed into current budgets. And so you have a very good analysis of what this is going to cost and that we're actually making very good progress. The one thing that I would point out, that one of the action programs was an urban forest management plan. That was one of the eighty nine. But the planning commission, along with staff, said we're never going to be able to do this because it's too expensive. And so we just pushed it to the side. So right now, that's not in this plan. But it's likely to get pushed into this plan a little bit later in twenty twenty three. So I wanted to let you be aware of that. There are also a couple of other things I would note. And that, and that is, there are some items on here that were added. That the planning commission took a look at, that were not a part of the original eighty nine. And that's more related to some of the EV stations and the work going on with WGC. The other thing that I will point out. Is you have a very, very small document. And this is the real thing here. And I just wanted to point out that on the implementation measures, there's, each implementation measures on this document has a cell. That actually lists the specific task for each implementation, up to a maximum of ten. And then along with that web links and linkages on how to do the reports. So this thing is a document anyone can use to do climate change if they wanted to. But that, the detail's not there in your documents this evening, but I do have it if you're interested. And with that, I would just briefly go through. And with that, I would just briefly go through um, the 14 items. The first one is establish and regularly update a new climate change chapter to the city's comprehensive plan. We've already done that. I expect that we'll be making some changes as we go through 2020's periodic update. Number two is a big one, developing a five-year plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I actually think that we may have a draft document that staff will be using in 2023. And the reason is, is because we're using Google E I E I S documentation. We already have documents dating back to 2018 for our greenhouse gas calculations. And we've included I-5. I want to take I-5 out of that and update some of the numbers. I would think our numbers are going to drop substantially. So I think that we take that into condition, along with the ability to pull records from cars that are electric. We're going to be able to start counting for this. And some of the stuff that's working on with Department of Commerce, we will be able to do a better, better calculations over time. Right now, it's going to be sort of broad, but it will get more and more specific as we work on the details. Number three, update the city's non-motorized transportation plan. It's already underway. It's supposed to be completed by June 20, June 2023. It's already been funded. Uh, contractor has already been working on that. Fourth, the Clover Creek flood plan engineering alternative analysis. This is in the category of uh, resiliency. This is coming back to the city council, October 17th, for initial report by, by Mr. Dusich. We have some strange things going on with water hydrology in Lakewood and specifically in Springbrook. So we have a creek drying up, but then we have areas that are not drying up, extremely wet. We're kind of scratching our heads as to why. And then review as appropriate, Title 14, we've already started doing that with the climate change. Uh, excuse me, not with climate change, but with tree preservation. You'll probably see more changes in the periodic update. Number six, work with Pierce County and Pierce County municipalities to develop a regional approach for best practices. Uh, that's already underway. Number seven, develop a public engagement plan for climate change. You're going to see this as a part of the comprehensive plan update. Uh, myself and Tiffany have been talking about some new software that we're thinking about introducing that will expand public participation. I'm really excited about this. And we've had several conversations, and we're going to pay for this through our grants to the state of Washington, so not affecting the city's budget. Uh, the council is also looking at a um, neighborhood coordinator position that's coming up as a part of my budget presentation Wednesday. So all that's kind of get kind of combined together as we go through and start talking about public participation. Uh, eight, incorporating environmental justice into the energy and climate change work plan. That is a more, it's not something we're not good at. How do I say it? And so we're going to try to do it, but I have a date of June 2024 rather than right away. That is something that uh, I'm continuing to do research on. Number nine, SSMCP, they're very effective at getting grant funds. They have about $95 million to start work on the I-5 corridor. The whole eventual goal is reconstruction of the bridges all through the Miss Kali Basin. That's probably a $4 billion project, uh, but they've done outstanding work in moving this forward. Can revise the Lakewood City Tree Preservation Code. I won't say any more than that. Uh, 11, explore the feasibility of reducing the city's footprint on its city hall. That work is underway, and I believe you'll get a report in, I think either December, January of this, of 2022 or 2024. Well, this is more of a housekeeping item, but it's worth noting, you're going to see more and more changes to the city's building codes to address energy conservation and EV stations. There's both a lot of consternation on that. Um, Wabo refused, actually didn't adopt the uh, the governor's energy conservation requirements. And so what happened was they had it adopted through the Department of Commerce. So we're looking at energy conservation through the Department of Commerce, and Washington Association of Building Officials is doing all the other stuff. So it it's kind of confusing and it's difficult. Uh, 13, support the implementation on Tacoma Pierce County Solid Waste Management Plan. Uh, that's a big project. It's probably going to take about three years. It may result in major changes to how we pick up garbage and potentially increase costs. And 14, coordinate regional electric vehicle infrastructure strategy with neighboring cities, Pierce County, and the state. That's an ongoing project. So those are the list of 14 projects that we're looking at as far as a initial adoption of your work plan for three years. And uh, the uh, goal is to bring this back for the council action at your next meeting, October 17th. And I'm running out of voice, so please excuse me.
Drink some water. Well, how many meetings did you have to get down to 14?
Total 10.
10 meetings?
10 meetings with the planning commission. And there's a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Bokey was present, probably in many of them. Uh, lots of debate, um, you know, are we going too far? You know, we're getting into private property rights issues, so forth.
It's a lot to take into consideration when we're implementing things like that. So we appreciate the time. We're too big to do it. Mr. Booker, did you have a comment? Mr. Bransdeter?
Hey, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Buer, uh, I had a cou- couple of clarifying questions. It um, develop, number seven, develop a public engagement plan for climate change. And that uh, it lists the University of Washington's full of public policy. Is this a, a similar strategy that we used before, where we've had University of Washington assistance to, to do, to do this?
They actually, the, the study that they prepared in the final document that I believe was provided to the council, they actually gave us some recommendations. So I'm looking at seeing if we can't uh, uh, use some of their recommendations as we move forward with, with item seven.
So, so I understand, is this something that they've already done this work? Or are we going to partner with them to do additional work?
They've already done some of the work, and we want to expand upon it. So we have this $50,000 commerce grant. We might use a portion of that to help us uh, with the engagement.
Right. And you, I'm trying to understand what action is going to come before the council. Previously, a little over a year ago, we approved an action plan that had way too many items on it. So, so is adopting this list of items going to replace as the action plan that previous action?
No.
So is this adding 14 items? I mean, some of these are the same, others are new.
I would say the majority of them, probably 85, 90% are the same, Mr. Bransdeter. There's maybe one or two that have been added, such as EV stations. But this is reflective of the 89 and narrowing it down to 14 on a three-year work plan.
So the, the the previous plan that we adopted by ordinance, that was a long-term work plan, not a three-year plan?
It was a, I would.
I, I thought it was a three-year plan.
Well, there's, I.
I, I'm, I'm trying to understand. There were some of the things that were on that, and, and the original thing, yeah, we had short-term, midterm, long-term things. And we had this long list of things, and we approved and said they're all good ideas or to do that. Now we're going to an action, and is this action that we're taking going to be an amendment to the previous ordinance? To target three years at these 14 items?
Yes, simple answer is yes. You will see an ordinance before you at your next meeting that will list these 14. And these 14 are almost exactly the same as the original 89. We just toned the list down to a smaller number.
So what becomes the status of the items on the 89 that aren't replicated?
Okay, those will be reviewed as a part of the periodic update.
So there'll be potential additions to future plans?
Or, or removal of some of the items, because some of them will have been completed, or that we will have additional information from other communities where they're going to say, you know, Lakewood, you shouldn't be doing this, and how about doing that? I, I do think that you'll see the periodic update, taking that list of 89 and changing it up.
Yeah. And then you said adopting an urban forestry program was taken off the list by the planning commission. Could you be a little bit, and you said it because they thought it would cost too much. And it was, this is all being done in the same time that we're all doing all this tree preservation and where the idea of an urban forestry program. And all the other reports sounded good, okay? And this, this, this sounds like it's now a planning commission thinks it's a bridge too far. And your characterization was approve the 14, and then we'll force this one into it during 2023.
I, I, well, I didn't think I said force it, but I will, I would say it this way. Uh, this is what the planning commission recommended. So these are the 14. Now, the urban forest management was one of the 89. But when we were considering this, it felt like that was something that was, you're right, a bridge too far, so it was set aside. It's still one of the 89, okay? It's just not one of the 14 at this time. Now, if it moves forward, and after May or so of 2023, and we present a report to the city council with more detail about an urban forestry plan, I have, it would make sense to come in, amend the ordinance, and include urban forestry as one of the, one of the primary items for the three-year work.
It's my understanding, given the budget information we have received so far, that, that there is in, proposed to include elements and staffing and things that would deal with an urban forestry program in the proposed 23, 24 budget, which is well within the three-year window of this. So if we wanted to add a 15th item to what we were adopting to do the forestry plan, we could, I mean, we can do that by amendment.
It's, yes, and I was going to say that before you start talk, before you start talking. But yes, it's easy to add that as a work plan item for this list.
That, that would seem that it would be easier than anticipating doing an amendment to this in six months to add it. If we're going to approve money for it, now.
I, I'm just trying to be careful, because I don't know what this RFP and what the final numbers are going to look like. So I'm, I'm being conservative, but obviously, if the council wants to move forward with, with that as an item, that's fine.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah. And Deputy Mayor, you know, I'm certainly think that, given all of our momentum and discussion about that and the significance of of, of freeze in the climate and emission secretion, that, and the fact that uh, we're going to be doing some, something within the next three years around doing that. And then that, that we created a community expectation that we'll be working towards an urban forestry program, that we should add that as in, within the third, third, three-month short-term work plan, because it definitely has a role in the, in climate change.
If, if there's consensus on that this evening, I can go ahead and add it as one of the implementation measures and bring it back.
You can add another sentence. Just sort of one where it provides the tree preservation code and say, and implement.
Okay.
Do we have a consensus from the council? We do.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Farmer?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, I believe I heard you say, connected to number 13, that, that might change the way we pick up garbage. And.
Yes.
I didn't know who the we was, because we, the city doesn't pick up garbage, do we?
Will be a part of our contract with Waste Connections.
Okay.
The county is not wanting to expand the dump. And they want to change the way in which organic material is collected. And so I think it's, and it will probably also begin to address glass and metals a little bit differently. So there may be more separation, and there's a potential, I see, for some increased costs. I'm just, I'm thinking that's where this might go. And, and so it does have an impact environmentally. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that this is a pretty significant um, action item related to climate change, but also the city budget.
Right. And it's, yeah, it's typically, typically a lot of work based on some previous experience. I've had at the city of Tacoma, working with their, uh, with their solid waste division. Um, I really wanted to commend staff, you staff, and the planning commission for this, for this work. I, it was an eye-popping number, the 89. But it all needs to be done. And so it's really, it, it's hard, it's hard to cull down the number. But I see in the, in the 14, and now maybe 15 or 14 plus, that, that you're getting to take credit for some of the work that you were already doing anyway. And, and being able to, there are only so many staff resources to go around. There's only so much money. There are only so many grants that you can go after. And so I think this is very reasonable for a three-year work plan. And yes, your characterization that, that, that 89 is going to change and morph and in, out, up, down. Um, so good job. I think that, that's, I think you've got a really good, good thing going here.
I'll just, also to the councils, pay particular attention to item two, the five-year plan for reducing greenhouse gases. That is going to have some major implications on future work plans. Um, and so that, we'll have a draft, I think, um, first half of 2023 to take a look at. And I've been looking at other cities who've been doing this a lot longer than in Washington State. So I have a pretty good idea what this is going to look like. And I think our numbers take out I-5.
Right. That reminded me of Councilmember Bransdeter's comment earlier, referencing the Pierce County greenhouse gas emissions report. And so I bet I-5 is in theirs, so.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Buer. Moving on, you can take a look at our tentative schedule, uh, a lot, uh, scheduled for October 17th. I'm not going to read through those, but uh, they're there for you to, you to review. And with that, we move on to the city manager report by Mr. Caffey.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members. A few updates. Uh, the first is, we received a request, a letter, sorry, a letter from the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. They're a partner with the city. A letter from the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. They're a partner with the city. And um, they are going to be hosting a signature event. They've been looking for an event to host here in the community for a couple of years. And so they have decided to create um, an annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Service Award. And um, they have chosen the month of March to do that in, given that um, month is Women's National History Month. They're going to be doing it at the McGavick Center and they want to do the signature event on Saturday, March fourth. And um, they're they're expecting the event is going to cost about maybe ten to twelve thousand dollars and they're asking the city of Lakewood to contribute three thousand dollars. Um, they'll be reaching out to other agencies and organizations to um, contribute to this event as well as um, the sale of the tickets to um, help finance this. Um, you know, the city has been working with LMCC for several years now. Matter of fact, within the budget that's proposed for twenty-three and twenty-four as well as twenty-two, there is a line item of three thousand dollars to support LLMC um, in terms of just their regular um, annual operations and and such. So um, my recommendation would be to um, fund this and um, you know, there's a couple of ways you could do it. You could include it as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. Um, I would suggest that, given where we are financially right now, um, I'm confident that the city would be able to contribute three thousand dollars out of its two thousand twenty-two budget to accommodate this event in March. And also, I I believe providing the money now gives them a little bit more assistance to be able to raise other money, knowing that they have that those funds in in hand. So um, I would ask the council, if you're okay with that, I can, I can make that happen as your city manager. So just wanted to um, uh, bring that bring that forward to you.
Any?
Would that technically be a carryforward item or just a?
Uh, Councilmember Farmer, um, within the the general fund budget, there's enough savings within a multitude of city departments and such to be able to do this. Um, but it's, I would charge it off somewhere probably within the Parks and Recreation budget.
Okay. And the the LMCC isn't eligible for lodging tax funds?
I I don't know the answer to that question, Councilmember Farmer.
Okay.
Um, this type of an event would not be though.
Okay. Okay. Um, I'm in support.
Thank you. So unless there's any objection from the council, I can make it happen again unless there's any objection. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I think it's a great event. I'm a little biased. So sorry.
Thank you.
Um, on the legislative front, I wanted to report out, you might remember earlier, uh, going back to the last state legislative session, that our delegation led by Representative Bernosky was able to secure some funding for um, the Department of Commerce to do a study to do um, a geographic location of where folks in Washington State were coming out of, shall we say, you know, uh, state hospitals and other facilities and where they're going. And uh, you know, here in Pierce County, we have always had this impression that, you know, Pierce County has been the proverbial dumping ground for that. And then also Lakewood, of course, just giving, you know, the number of facilities that we have in here, whether it's Western State, all the facilities on Western State, ancillary and support of that, adult family homes. Now we have an ESF group homes. We have the McNeil Island um, Special Commitment Center. And quite frankly, the list goes on and on. And you might recall that that we had a, um, this summer, we had a bit of a concern when we learned that Commerce was not going to bring in an independent third-party contractor to undertake that work. We reached out to our delegation. They subsequently reached out to Commerce. So I have a couple of bits of good news to report to you on that front. Um, the first is is that Commerce, their team reached out to us about a week ago or so. And they wanted to get the city of Lakewood's perspective in terms of what we would like to see as a part of the outcome of that study. And we really appreciated that because there was no mandate for them to be able to do that. And so we sat down with them for a little over an hour and um, we gave them some background information as it relates to our concerns. And uh, they were very appreciative of that. And um, so uh, you know, some of the things that we focused on was, you know, we got adult family home businesses. We got group homes. We got an ESF. We got the special commitment, sexually violent predators coming off of the 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 Special Commitment Center. And again, the list, the list goes on. And so that was something they were not at the stat at their level were not aware of. And so um, they're going to make sure that those issues are incorporated into this study. In addition, they pointed out, even though they um, um, are not using an independent third-party contractor to do it, they're doing it themselves. Um, but we were told that they were going to be using DSHS and such. They're not. They're using actually um, an arm of state government called the RDA, the Research and Data Analysis Division, um, which is, and they they were clear on its role, its independence. And so long story short, any concerns that I, as your city manager, had how they're going about this, I have no concerns anymore. Um, so um, I, you know, I was very pleased again with Commerce reaching out to us. And again, we had a good dialogue and a good conversation. And so um, they also offered to keep us appraised as they go along in developing this, which they hope to have available for the state legislature by December. So again, just wanted to report some good news on 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 that front. Um, I'd like to um, congratulate our our finance department for a triple crown, which is not batting average home runs and RVIs, given that we, the Mariners are in the playoffs for the first time in a couple of decades. Um, so um, however, this is uh, from the Government Finance Officers Association and that the city of Lakewood is a triple crown and that we have received distinguished financial awards for our um, annual financial report, for a popular annual financial report, and of course, our 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 budget, our distinguished budget presentation award. And um, the reason I bring this up and the reason that it is a big deal is because we are only one of three hundred and seventeen municipalities in the whole United States to get all three. So to put that in perspective, there are over nineteen thousand cities, villages and towns in over thirty-two hundred counties, not counting the myriad of special municipalities that exist, whether it's a school district or um, you know, water district or whatever. So um, to say it puts us in the top one percent is probably a bit of an understatement. But just to be on the conservative side, um, certainly puts us in the cutting edge as it relates to how we handle our finances here at the city and the level of transparency and the communication with the public. And that's a testament to all of you folks as the policymakers. So I just wanted to also extend our congratulations to you because it starts, it starts with you. And then I want to recognize our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, for her leadership day in and day out to making sure that we achieve that. That is, that is correct, Councilmember. That is, and I think that's correct. Um, also, um, on Saturday, you know, this body, you'll be having a half-day retreat. Um, or if you want to be longer, that's fine, um, on your legislative agendas as it relates to state, federal and county. Um, did want to point out that AWC, their Board of Directors, about a week or so or two weeks ago or so, um, did finalize their um, legislative agenda. And the reason I bring it up is because the city of Lakewood, uh, we serve on AWC's Legislative Committee, and so we were actively engaged in that. And um, the five um, key priority issues for AWC is to address the Blake decision, um, public safety vehicular pursuits, infrastructure funding and housing affordability and availability and accessibility. Want to point out that Lakewood was actually very um, involved in that discussion there primarily because of our role and shape. And if you want to know where accessibility came from, that came from Lakewood contingent. Um, and then the whole issue of behavioral health, and again, something that city was very supportive of, um, because part of that is to provide funding to all cities and towns as it relates to having behavioral health contact teams like we do here in Lakewood. So um, just wanted to point that out. And um, there's a number of other significant support and monitoring issues they have as well. And I know I sent that on to you earlier, earlier today. Um, your Lakewood Sister Cities Association, which works in partnership with the city as it relates to um, our sister cities. Um, Gimhee from the Republic of Korea, their mayor is going to be visiting here in early December. Like he's him and his delegation are going to fly over on December fourth. They're going to spend a day in Seattle. Usually they spend some time with the consulate there. Then they want to come down to Lakewood and host an event. We'll host an event for them. This last happened, by the way, in two thousand nineteen. So this is something that, you know, we can pull off and get squared away. We're working with the association right now. They would then spend a day down here on December fifth, and then they would um, return back to Seattle and head back home on the sixth and or seventh. So um, just kind of wanted to give you a warning order and a heads up that that's going to be coming. Um, that is a Monday. You know, so perhaps we can actually incorporate something into your council meeting on December fifth as well, given that they're going to be here. But certainly sometime in the afternoon, um, we'll be um, doing something to welcome them here to um, to Lakewood, given our our sister city. Um, and um, I think uh, those are major things I wanted to report on. And then again, as it relates to your to your calendar, this Friday, Saturday rather, again, is your um, retreat. Also, this Thursday afternoon, um, at three thirty PM over on on post, our two-two striker brigade, they're going to be um, doing the um, casing of their colors because they are going to be um, deploying for nine months. So they go through a ceremony that goes back several hundred years. It's actually pretty cool. And uh, all of you are invited to attend. And so if you'd like to, let us know. We'll get you, um, we'll get you signed up. And um, I know myself and I know the mayor and several others are going to be headed over there for that. Uh, so um, and then uh, actually Wednesday, um, another meeting right here on on budget for uh, for other city departments. And we'll have um, we won't have taco Tuesday. I think we're going to have taco Wednesday. Is that is that correct, City Manager? Yes. It's it'll be here. Yes, sir.
Mr. Caffey?
With that, Deputy Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Caffey. Um, where is this two-two striker brigade going to be held?
It'll it'll, it's held on um, Nor- Art.
Watkins.
Oh, Watkins Field. Thank you. I was about to say, that's correct. Watkins Fields. Thank you, Councilmember. I was about to say over on Northport in front of their building, but it's not. It's on Watkins Field.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager?
Which is over on main post.
Thank you.
And I I can fit three in my vehicle. If you want to come with me. So just give me a call. Let me know.
Well.
Okay, I got you.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you so much. Okay. Then we'll go into council comments. Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Uh, the first TCC improvement meeting is scheduled for, I believe, Wednesday morning at eleven for an hour. Uh, staff has briefed me on some or sent me some issues. That's the Transportation Coordinating Committee. Uh, and we we put together a working group of city officials. So I'm in county officials. So there's two county council members, myself. Um, remember the University Place City Council. Uh, someone from Tacoma. And I can, and I believe someone from Puyallup, which is really the instigator of this whole thing. And then uh, but unfortunately, we saw the news and you might have seen the news that Mr. Russell Land from the city of Fife, who was instrumental in the TCC for a lot of years, uh, died in a motorcycle accident this weekend, I think. Russ Blunt. Deputy City Manager. So um, but I guess we're still going ahead with this. And so I don't know what staff would be involved. Um. I do have a que- I do have a question for the city manager. Um, we received last week, I think, a did we get an email from somebody complaining about an apartment building and how bad it was? Or did I see that on social media and I forget to send it to you? I saw it on social media and I forgot. Uh, I think it was in Lakewood Life. So if I find it again, I'll be forwarded. I will not be here Saturday or Monday. So I will be out of pocket. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Boki. Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Farmer?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. At the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Executive Board meeting on Friday, we undertook a number of actions. The first was to receive a presentation from the Department of Commerce regarding House Bill implementation of House Bill twenty twenty and a new change coming in. I believe we've talked about it a little bit here and and Ms. Spears following this. Um, that we're looking to to plan for and accommodate housing that's affordable to all economic segments. And so we need to to start building in uh, different economic tiers, if you will, to our to our housing affordability plan. So there's there's a lot of work, a lot of work uh, to be done there. And the Department of Commerce is is spearheading some of that. So more to come. Uh, one of the other items is that we adopted the twenty twenty-three work plan, and I will be forwarding that to you shortly. And we also adopted the twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. And I had it pulled up. Because I wanted to highlight something and that went away. There it is. All right. So we um, we have three main priorities of legislative session, uh, creating housing stability, increasing affordable housing subsidies and facilitating uh, an increased housing supply. So there are a number of items and it's in this handy-dandy designed format now. And um, I will be forwarding that to you as well. So um, your our participation, Lakewood's participation in the in the Housing Affordability Partners um, is is proving to be very valuable in this regional approach to to the housing issues that we're all facing. So I'm really, really excited by the work that the group is doing. And that's it for me. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter?
Regarding the the work plan and the legislative priorities, that um, anticipating that the city will have a legislative priority, which will be a capital ask regarding housing for um, to advance the the project that LASSA is undertaking. Is is the affordability of, is the regional group uh, able to specifically advocate for that particular capital ask?
Yes, yes, in anticipation of this question tonight. There there has been talk um, that that um, that SHAPE will support the LASSA Gravelly Commons project as a priority capital budget. And so, and we've been, um, SHAPE has been in contact with our lobbyists. And there's a lot of support going back and forth for that. And SHAPE is working with each of the individual members of SHAPE to see what, to see what capital projects and capital needs are in the particular jurisdictions, because everybody's got something a little bit different that they need support for. And so it's really quite interesting that we're not, we're not taking a blanket approach and just kind of seeing what everybody needs and how how SHAPE with its collective buying power, if you will, can can um, make things happen.
Councilmember Boki?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to the Arts Commission tonight for their great presentation on their work plan and all that they do and that they're bringing to the community. I know they're all really committed and um, very passionate about what they do, and I appreciate that a lot. And also for Sally Martinez, the staff that and Nikki York that handles it. So I just think that they do an amazing job. Uh, this Thursday, I get the honor to be um, one of the daffodil selection judges at Clover Park High School. So I think that will be fun. I'm excited to see how that goes. That's it for me. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Well, I just want to say thank you guys for supporting LMCC. I think you're going to be really pleased. We have great things planned. It's going to be a lot of fun. And uh, hopefully it'll be an annual event going forward. So, thank you. And yeah, I um, I did attend Truck and Tractor Day. That I had a blast. I had a wonderful time. There was no, uh, it wasn't as crowded as I expected it to be, but it was just, it was wonderful. And my granddaughter, my great-granddaughter said, Nani, I'm tired. And I was so glad because I was getting tired too. So that's that's it for me. But it was a wonderful event. So that's, that's it for me. But it was a wonderful event. Very well done. Is that it? Anything for the Good Order?